Okay, we'll call the meeting to order at 6:31 PM, 10:05, October 5th. If we could all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Put your right hand over your heart and repeat after me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, Mr. Russi.
Councilmember Davis?
Here.
Councilmember Crosby.
Hi, sir.
Councilmember Lau?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Carter?
Present.
Mayor Heffernan?
Present. Any announcements, upcoming community events?
I don't think we've had anything, JR. Yes, we do actually have a couple of announcements from the Laverne Chamber of Commerce. Leah Skinner, Leah, you're live.
Good evening, council members. I do have two community events to announce this evening. The Laverne and San Dimas Chambers of Commerce will host a virtual forum for the nine candidates running for the three open seats on the Benita Unified School District Board of Education. The forum will be streamed live on the KWST San Dimas Television YouTube channel on Tuesday, October 20th, beginning at 6:00 PM. The forum will be moderated by Dr. Kimberly White Smith, Professor of Education and Dean of the University of Laverne's LaFetta College of Education. Questions must be submitted prior to the forum via email, and emails can be sent to The second announcement, the Laverne Chamber of Commerce, with title sponsors The Corner Butcher Shop and Modern Mayhem Suites, are hosting Taste of Laverne Restaurant Week, Wednesday, October 21st through Saturday, October 25th. Restaurant Week is an event that will showcase Laverne as a premier dining destination, offering diners a wide variety of culinary experiences. Participating restaurants will offer special prefix menus with breakfast, lunch, dinner, and takeout specials available. Restaurant Week was created to honor and support those who have demonstrated creativity, determination, tremendous work ethic, and a spirit of giving during one of the most tumultuous times in the culinary industry. For a list of participating restaurants and menus, please visit www.tastoflaverne.com. If there ever was a time to celebrate our local restaurants, it's now. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Leah, appreciate it. JR, anything else?
Nothing else has been received, sir.
Okay. Has anything been pulled from the consent calendar? No? Nobody pulled anything?
JR, have you heard of anything?
No request for anything to be pulled.
Then at that point, I would ask for a motion for the consent calendar.
I'll make that motion.
And a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All as opposed? Motion carries. We move to public hearings, item number six.
Yes, and before we get started, we will be saying goodbye to Councilmember Davis for a moment. He has a conflict because he has a property that is in the vicinity of this particular residence. Candace Bocock will be doing the report for you, as well as we have the applicant, Matt Wickin, as well as the seller being represented, and I do not have their name off the top of my head, but they will also be in the Zoom room as part of this discussion. So with that, I will turn it over to Candace, as I believe she's listed as community development down there. Candace?
And if I could just interject, there's a person in the waiting room named James Moran. Is that the other person that needs to be admitted?
And then Matt, I know you're there. Are we expecting also the seller to be on this as well?
We are, Bob, yes.
Okay. I do not, you do not have anybody else in the waiting room at this point, JR?
I don't see anybody that I don't recognize. There's some people in there that are for later items, but I don't see, do we know the name of the person that we're expecting, Candace?
I don't remember her first name. It would be through her, it would be through Stefan?
Stefan Wheeler?
Is with her.
Oh, Stefan, yep.
Okay. Well, we can go ahead and get started, and then JR, if you could monitor and see if they end up in the waiting room.
Okay.
Right, Candace?
Okay. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council members. This item is a request from the applicant, Mark, I'm sorry, Matt Wickin and the seller, requesting the city council to determine that the home located at 2109 White Avenue does not individually represent a significant historic building worthy of historic preservation, and that it can be approved to be salvaged and then demolished in conjunction with a future development proposal. This home was built in 1912 at the southwest corner of White and First Street. The home is about 1,500 square feet with a detached garage and a detached studio. Located in the Old Town Laverne specific plan area and zoned for medium-density residential This request has no correlation with the White Avenue widening project and is and is a completely separate item. At this time, there is no proposed development at this site. The first step for any developer will be to determine that it can be done, will be to determine what can be done with this home. Once that's decided, the proposals can be made. With some of the very preliminary proposals that have been made up to this point have been consistent with the medium-density zoning for this site, which are consistent with the current zoning of the Old Town Laverne specific plan. So about a year ago, the applicant contacted staff regarding this property and the adjacent property, which is 2467 First Street, and after reviewing the zoning and the opportunities that the current zoning offers for these sites, the applicant presented some ideas that possibly involved retaining the home while developing around it. And after many attempts to incorporate the home into the plans and financially into the project, it was ultimately deemed not feasible. The applicant then came back to staff with a different plan that did not include retaining the home, and asked if the city could support the relocation or removal of the home. Staff explained to the developer that we did not have much historical information on the home, that there is no historic plaque, the historic file was one sheet of paper that was provided as Attachment A for council. However, on page 90 of the Old Town Laverne specific plan, which you can see as Attachment B, it does show that a photo of the home with a caption that states "East Edge Single Family Residence to Remain," and due to the age of the home, complete demolition would not be supported. So staff continued to meet with the applicant and discuss options of relocating the home somewhere in the city of Laverne. The city suggested Lost Forest Park as being a possible option, and the applicant took the next steps to find out what it would take to actually move the home and get some bids on that. And after much consideration and review of numerous bids, relocation of the home was determined to not be feasible, because the home would need to be taken apart and almost entirely rebuilt to today's codes and various ADA standards. The power lines are low, streets are narrow, the rock porch, which is the home's main historic defining feature, would not be able to be relocated. All of those details are described in an email that were also, that's also attached in the report as Attachment C. Staff suggested that if the applicant wanted to move forward with exploring the option of demolition, that they hire an independent third-party consultant to prepare a historic evaluation of the structure. The applicant then hired Sappos Environmental from Pasadena to prepare a historical assessment report to analyze the home's historic significance, which can be seen as Attachment D to the report. The detailed report, in short, basically concluded that the house does not appear to be individually eligible for listing in the National Register, California Register, or for the designation as a historic, as a heritage build, as a heritage building. The property is a low-style example of a craftsman bungalow and does not convey an association with early residential development or the citrus industry in the city. Staff shared this report with the city's historical architectural professional, John Sorcenelli, and the president of the Laverne Historical Society, Sherri Best, for their professional review and comments. John Sorcenelli conducted a site inspection and provided a response to the review, which can be seen as Attachment F. To summarize his, to summarize his review, John Sorcenelli's response stated that he recognized the craftsman-style house and the other buildings on the site as historic as they were constructed in 1912. He concluded that the report is comprehensive and complete, and the conclusions of the report are rational and reasonable, and that individually, the house is not a significant historic building worthy of historic preservation. He explains in further detail that the house is not currently near any buildings along White Avenue and First Street that do not provide the context to contribute towards a contiguous historic district. He also explains that if the porch cannot be moved, then relocation should not be pursued, as the porch embodies the craftsman feature that gives the house its craftsman character. Sherri Best, the president of the Laverne Historical Society, also visited and inspected the house and provided staff with the response letter as Attachment E, stating that the Laverne Historical Society is in agreement that the building at 2109 White Avenue may be demolished, and that the house is not an important historic structure, nor was it inhabited by residents of early Lordsburg who were associated with the citrus industry. She is very interested if the house can be demolished in assisting with the salvaging of materials, and stresses the importance of first offering these materials to Laverne residents and homes. If the council determines the homes can be demolished, the applicant will offer a local-only salvage noticing for homeowners in Laverne to repurpose at no charge architectural elements from the home for their personal use on those homes. Exhausting the various options, the applicant and the seller are jointly requesting the city consider allowing the home to be demolished and salvaged of any features that are of significance. The current owners selling the property are also proposing to donate $45,000 to the City of Laverne Historical Society for historic preservation purposes. Staff is recommending that the city council determine the home located at 2109 White Avenue does not individually represent a significant historic building worthy of historic preservation, and that it can be approved to be salvaged and then demolished in conjunction with a future development proposal. Staff reached out to the applicant regarding some other possibilities, and I provided that correspondence for council this morning, and the applicant, Matt Wickin, is here to speak to that and answer any questions that you may have of him as the applicant, and I am also here of staff if you have any questions for me.
Thank you, Candace, appreciate that.
Hang on, I'd like to clarify, thank you, sorry, I was on mute. Candace, you said that the contribution would be made to the historical society, but I think the contribution will be to the city.
City of Laverne slash?
Or historic preservation.
Or for historic, yeah.
There are a couple individuals here, Bob and Candace, from, in the dealings here. Should we, do they have something they wanted to let the council know? If we could?
They're the applicant, so yes, I think that'd be appropriate.
Yes. Mr. Wickin or Mr. Moran, did you wish to speak?
Sure, I'll start, and thank you very much for taking this item up and reviewing it tonight, and thanks, Bob and Candace, for a great presentation. Candace did a fantastic job of summarizing this entire request before you. I can just say that I want to tell you that we did not take this lightly. When we, when we entered escrow on this project and began, we thought that this was going to be approximately a 60-day process. It's turned into almost an eight-month process. We've exhausted all efforts for alternative solutions, and we do feel, based on the reports and the studies, which are supported by the city's consultant, that there isn't historic significance to the specific home as it relates to the demolition. We had a great meeting on-site with the historical society, and we are willing to work with them in every aspect of salvaging the home to whatever degree they want. And we also understand that there, there is or there are potentially still a neighbor or two that has an interest in potentially having this home relocated, and if there, we specifically need this request to be, we need this to go through tonight, but if somebody wants to have a window to work on relocating the property after the fact, we're willing to cooperate with that as well. So, I mean, we think we've done everything we possibly can. We've never waited eight months before even submitting a site plan or a project for review, and we focused only on this over the course of that last period of time. So, I want to thank you guys for your time tonight.
Thank you very much. Mr. Moran? You're muted.
Muted, sorry.
There you go, you're good.
Am I good now, sorry? I just wanted to say, ditto what Matt said, we've, I'm with WF Construction, Matt and I are working together on this project. We just finished a big project down the street, it was great, worked out really well, I think everyone's happy. We, the only thing I did want to clarify was that this, this, you know, there's been some comments about this developer coming in and just swooping in all on these properties. I want to make it clear that the seller came to us and asked if we would be interested in purchasing the property. So this isn't something we went out and got, they actually came and found us because of what we've done down the street. So, we're here to work, and I think, I'll say what Matt said, if tonight's, if everything goes the way that staff is presenting, we would still, we'd still have some time where if they can find something else to do with the property, we'd love to give them time for that. The only other thing would be that I have just finished another project just recently, where we did a historic salvage, and it went really well, we did four homes, all pre-1920, and what, community got the stuff, it was really great, went really well, and we're using the, that as a new model in this city. This is city promoted, is a model of how they're going to do some of these historic salvages in the future. Do you have any, in the future, any questions?
Can I, can I have one thing?
Yes, sure, Mr. Wickin.
I'm very sorry, the, the owner of the property really wanted to make a brief address to you, she wasn't able to log on, and she wondered if there's a way that she can be contacted, if I give you her cell phone number, is that possible, or is that not, we're not able to do that?
Mr. Russi, I think we can do that, is that correct?
And he's muted, so I'll jump in here.
Yes. JR, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Mr. Wickin, if you could either email the phone number to cityclerk@cityofloverne.org.
Good.
If you email the number there, I'm monitoring those emails, and I could have the assistant city clerk give her a call and have her state for a public comment.
We don't want her cell phone number over live broadcast.
I got it, yeah.
Yes.
Okay.
JR, we have a number of phone comments on this subject, is that correct?
We do, sir. We do, sir.
If, does council have any questions, or should we wait till after public comment?
Let's wait after public comment.
That's what I thought, yeah, we've got quite a few people. I just had a couple points of clarification. Today, we received, Candace, I'll refer this to Candace, we received a letter that the, the builders or the owner are willing to give 90 days, if someone, up to 90 days, if someone has a, some type of plan to move or to move the house to somewhere else, is that correct, Candace?
Yes.
Okay, we probably want to make that known, that that was this afternoon, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so they're giving 90 days, and also, I just had a question, originally it was $50,000 to the city, and now it's 45, was there, was there a change there somewhere?
I think there was a bit of confusion between the seller and the broker and the developer and everyone, that I think the numbers were jumbled, but it was always 45.
Yeah, because it showed 50 in all the literature, and then it came out 45.
And then I was corrected to 45.
We liked the 50, so maybe, you know, now's the time to speak up, maybe we should talk to the owner, you know, I mean, why not? Why don't we go to, let's go to public comment, JR, if you don't mind, we'll, and then if you gentlemen don't mind hanging on, if we have any questions from, from the residents,
Yeah.
Yeah. Mr. Mayor, I was able to make contact with the phone number that was provided by Mr. Wickin, so I believe they can speak now, go ahead.
Okay, you want me to proceed?
Yes, please.
Okay. Hello, my name is Sandra Johnson, I'm the executor of the Martha H. Marsh Trust. I am 72, I have some pressing health issues, and I'm forced to work because I've gone through my savings, and I can't have my social security. We signed the paperwork with the developer in January of 2020, and that was 10 months ago. And my sisters and I are very frustrated because it's just taking too long to, to resolve this issue. I have no problem with the house and the buildings being torn down. And after having two historical societies inspected and find that it did not qualify, to me, there is no reason for this not to happen. I intend to donate $45,000 to you. In turn, I would like you to make this happen as quickly as you can.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson, appreciate it.
No problem.
Thank you very much.
Are you going to vote on it tonight?
That is the intent, yes. Once we hear public comment, yes.
Okay, and do you know when I can expect an answer?
When the meeting is, when we're done with this, we'll go back to council for comments, and then we're making a vote, it may be just a little bit, but we've got a number of people for phone conversations that want to put in input on this, so, but you will know, yes.
Okay, okay, very good. I just want to kind of emphasize and kind of plead with you that this is for both my sisters and myself, so we can set up trust for our children, and like I said, I have some, some pretty major health issues, and I'd like to get this taken care of so I can retire and enjoy whatever rest of my life I have. So I would appreciate very much if you would give a careful consideration.
Yes, ma'am, thank you very much, we do understand it. Unfortunately or fortunately, it is a, it's a historical piece of property that had to be vetted out, so we have a lot of historical properties in Laverne, so this being one of them, but I'm sorry it took so long, but there is a process to this, so we're doing the best we can. Thank you.
Okay, do you think we'll kind of move along a little faster now?
We'll do our best, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. JR, you want to bring the next people up?
Yes, one second. Hi, Mr. Salinas, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
All right, Mr. Salinas, you are live, please go ahead.
Hello, good evening. I would like to recommend that this be relocated to a different location, because I, I do not want the building to be torn down, because it's been here in the city over 100 years, and it's, it's been a part of the heritage for so, for very long time. I'm asking the city council to recommend it, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Salinas.
And Mr. Mayor, I should have Kristy Karns on the line, Kristy, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Okay, go ahead, you're live.
Good evening, Kristy.
Yes, hello. Thank you, yes, can you hear me?
Yes, they can hear you.
We can hear you.
Someone else is talking.
Oh, the, if you're listening to the live feed, it's delayed, so you need to shut that off, the actual meeting's a little ahead.
Oh, okay, so I'm on right now?
Yes, you are, you're live.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for allowing me to comment on this, I had the wrong seat going on. So, my name is Kristy Karns, I'm a longtime resident of Laverne, I'm also a member of the Laverne Historical Society, and my reason for speaking tonight is to ask the city council to postpone their vote on demolishing the White, the White Avenue House. I've always had a love of old homes in Laverne, and I've grown to understand the historical significance, as well as the old charm of these homes. Living in Laverne, you know, we have a great blend of the old and the new, and it's what makes Laverne so special. We have a set amount of the old homes in Laverne, and what's there is there. If we don't preserve what's there and slowly demolish them, then, you know, if it's gone, it's always gone, there's no going back. So I think we really need to look at the historical aspects of this house. And I, I have, I own a historical house on Sixth Street in Laverne, which was built the same year as this White Avenue House in 1912. And if you look at these houses, they have similar aspects, similar features of the craftsman house. They both were built with the Hanawalt block, and I learned about this block when I had to renovate my porch, and I found that I couldn't replace it with anything else because of that historic Hanawalt block. And I know that the White Avenue House has that as well. It has the big open porches that are typical to this house. If you go inside the White Avenue House, it has beautiful molding around the doors, it has the same five-panel doors, it has the same, exact same brass hardware on the handles, and it has a built-in, got the beautiful ash flooring. So there's just so many aspects that I believe are a typical craftsman home, and I'm surprised that it wasn't deemed historic, because it's almost like a cousin to the house that I have on Sixth Street, which is historic. I, I believe they're probably built by the same builder. So I know that there's been a lot of things going on with this house, and something fell through when it was supposed to be, had the opportunity to be moved to another site. So I would just say before it's really demolished, to take a good look at it and explore any other avenue, sounds like there's a lot right down the street that would be perfect for it, and, you know, we could, we could enjoy this house forever. So I just doubt that the city council takes a real good, long, hard look at it, and that's it, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, I have Pam Berry. Go ahead, Pam.
Good evening, Pam.
Hi. My great-grandmother came out on the train in the late 1800s as a young woman in her twenties, and she taught in a one-room schoolhouse among the orange groves of Lordsburg. She boarded in a room in a, in a home of a Methodist family in town, I wish I knew the name of the family. My great-grandfather met that family when they visited a they visited the Methodist church in Los Angeles and they invited him to Lord'sburg for Sunday dinner. Came out on his horse and buggy for his first of many trips out here because he fell in love with that young boarder, Alice Bond, and ultimately married her. So history here in Lord'sburg, Laverne, is important to me. So I'll just say that. Whether someone is a part of this town for generations or is a newcomer, our history matters. Now, the property on White has been here in our town for well over one hundred years. It's in good condition, not in disrepair, very well-maintained according to people who have been inside, and it's original, uh, in, in almost every part of the home. Um, it has many unique features that more recent homes do not have, will not have, just don't. I grew up in an old colonial home and people always were so charmed whenever they walked in because we had a lot of built-ins, not appliances, china cabinets, bookcases, buffets, nooks, benches, along with thick mahogany crown molding, wood floors, all the details that many people have not had the privilege of enjoying. Now, this home is not an uncut ice door. It does not belong scrapped and hauled off to the dump. The reason relocation was set aside, according to the report, is an un, that was a unavailable option because of excessive cost to dismantle, relocate, and rebuild at a more distant property and the impact of power lines and other obstacles along the way. But with nowhere to be found in your packet or any of the information that the council got, but we know now that there was another option, that a Laverne resident with a perfect bedding for the house just a few blocks away from its original position and it can take place without expense to the city, which is the main reason why relocation options were abandoned, according to the report. However, a professional movers didn't estimate two-hundred thousand dollars to move it to this closer property on First Street. Actually, it was far below that, what as, what Candace mentioned, and at no cost to the city. Uh, with this option, there's zero reason to demolish this house and the outbuildings that accompany it. It's twenty-twenty and a nineteen-twelve homestead is significant historically. Now, I'm also concerned in reading all the documentation and hearing it clearly stated about donations to the city for forty-five thousand to fifty thousand, any way linked to a vote. I find it very concerning. I don't think it was, is appropriate for any council member to vote on an item that has donations and income to the city in exchange for a positive vote. That's called a bribe. I don't know how you can view it. You said, "I will give forty-five thousand dollars if you can make this happen." Bribe. I think it would be, um, appropriate for the council to vote on it because of that. And the result of a vote would put your ethics in question. I find it very inappropriate. I propose that you pass one voting tonight, especially since it's linked to a donation, and further, uh, pursue the other option of ninety days to explore the alternative of relocating. Uh, it could be approved better than ninety days, but it, I think we need to give that some time and, and pursue relocating it instead of demolishing it. Uh, residents, young and old, would love to have a place to walk back into history in our town, an actual museum, a location for artifacts, memoirs, pause the vote, change direction, and show value to our group. And that's my comment.
Thank you, Pam. Appreciate it.
All right. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have Corinne Pantelio. Hi, go ahead. You're live.
Good evening.
Hi, uh, Mayor Hepburn, City Council, and fellow citizens. I would like to ask that the council postpone voting on the property at twenty-one oh nine White Avenue, Laverne, and allow Linda Lockhart Wilkinson, a variance to increase the size of the approved guest house to accommodate the White Avenue House on her property. Regardless of whether the home is deemed a significant historic building by the city council, many citizens feel that it is a historic building. In addition, Ms. Wilkinson is not asking for monetary help from the city, but instead generously making a contribution to the city of Laverne's Historical Society and all the citizens of Laverne. This is a win-win situation and I ask you to make the right decision that will benefit the citizens of Laverne for years to come. And one additional comment, after listening from the owner of the home, I would ask that if there's any way possible that it could be voted on tonight, hopefully, no postponement but for relocation by Ms. Wilkinson, that somehow payment could be expedited to the owner in consideration of her health issues. So, um, I thank you for your time. I appreciate your consideration. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. We need Jeopardy music.
We could hum.
Oh, I have it on my phone already. I'm ready to go.
Mr. Mayor, I have Catherine Butler for you.
Ms. Butler, how are you tonight?
I'm doing great. Um, greetings to the mayor and the council. Um, my name is Catherine Butler and I am at the corner of Third and White. Um, and I have an interest, both because I have a historic property and because I'm a resident of White Avenue. Uh, first of all, to the very, very heartfelt, uh, statement by the property owner, uh, I understand your pain of waiting ten months for a decision. I have a property in another town, in a, in another state, where I've waited over ten years for approval through four different vials. So it can take some time. So anyway, um, I request that the, first of all, I commend the work that's been done so far by the various groups and involving the Laverne Historic Association, of which I'm a member. And I, you know, I, I think that some thorough investigation has been done. However, I am, along with Pam, a little surprised that the option of the neighbor, um, Mrs. Wilkinson, who has offered a location and a solution, um, I'm surprised that that has not been, uh, apparent in any of the study materials and it's, uh, seems to be a, a win-win for everybody involved. So I encourage the council to give Ms. Wilkinson the forty-five days or the ninety days necessary to pursue that option. And I would like the record to show if that decision is made to go forward at this point, which I'm asking for it to be delayed, but I understand the concern of the seller. Uh, I'm asking that it be stated in the record that there is a formal, uh, approval of at least a ninety day, um, uh, rest for this option to be pursued. Um, I think it would benefit the Historical Society if the dwelling was, uh, retained and moved. And in terms of the porch, um, my porch did not have rock, uh, rock, um, detail and that was added, so I'm sure that appropriately the rock detail could be moved, uh, with enough time and effort. My main concern in speaking to the council is, in addition to saving the house, my concern that I have heard someone mention that the plan for the builder, and I would ask, uh, Mr. Waken, uh, to comment on this, that the builder's intent for the, uh, city's intent is to widen White at the area of this new construction. And I would be very, very concerned if this is true and I would ask the council and the builder to comment on this on record to indicate, because I fear a creeping, um, destruction of the residential community with maybe one block at a time, the widening which we have fought so greatly to dispel possibly would be reenacted in Littlewood. So my, my message to the council is please give time to Ms. Wilkinson, uh, to pursue her option and please comment, builder and council, on the potential to widen White Avenue as a result of this. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Did we remind folks about the, the time limit? I just want to be cognizant if there's a lot of people, that everybody gets heard.
I've kind of been letting them talk, but I, I, the combination between sixteen seconds and a minute and twenty and four, but I, I'll, I'm keeping an eye on it.
Okay.
I believe you should let them know that there's a, we've got a standing three-minute timeframe that we're trying to keep, so, yes.
Mr. Mayor, I believe I have, oh.
Hold on, I'll, I'll hang it up now, okay?
Okay, thank you. Mr. Mayor, I have Sheri Best on the line.
Ms. Best, how are you?
I, I'm just a combination between sixteen seconds and a minute and twenty and four, but I'm.
Do you have the live feed on, Sheri? You might have to turn that off so that we, it doesn't backfeed or delay.
I have muted my mic. Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Yes, we can.
Okay, perfect. Can I proceed?
Yes, please.
Thank you, members of the Laverne City Council and others present for this discussion. My name is Sheri Best and I am the current president of the Laverne Historical Society, a nonprofit 501(c)(3), which I will refer to as the LVHS. On August twelfth, twenty-twenty, our city historian Bill Lemon joined me on a visit to the property at two-one-zero-nine White Avenue in Laverne pursuant to a request that the main house on the property be evaluated for historic preservation or salvaged and then demolished. The meeting took place with multiple stakeholders. The Laverne Historical Society is in agreement that the building at two-one-zero-nine White Avenue may be demolished to make way for development of the property. However, our interest in preservation prompted a proposal, which is attached as part of the agenda package related to the public hearing items. The major aspects of this proposal are as follows. One, members of the LVHS will collaborate with appropriate city staff to develop a process whereby Laverne residents are made aware of salvaged materials and can apply for such materials for restoration and adaptive review, uh, reuse in their home. Two, members of the LVHS will collaborate with appropriate city staff who identify storage of salvaged materials, schedule time for Laverne residents to claim their materials, and offer remaining salvage to historical societies in adjacent cities. Three, the LVHS will document the restoration and adaptive reviews, reuse of salvaged materials by Laverne residents. Documentation of projects would be celebrated in Legacy Link, the LVHS newsletter. The developer's contribution to the city and the amount stipulated in the community development report shall go to the LVHS toward historical preservation within the city. The money's contributed toward historical preservation with funds three projects. The first is the previously described use of salvage in the house at two-one-zero-nine White Avenue. The second project would be the restoration of the nineteen-thirty-eight International Truck, once owned by LVHS president in Monctonity. We envision making the truck an enduring fixture of many Laverne festivities, as well as partnering with Laverne Heritage and Hillcrest in their hands-on history and story of Laverne project for our schoolchildren. Remaining funds would be used to complete the LVHS Pocket Museum project that will deploy artifacts of our history throughout the city. The demolition of the house at two-one-oh-nine White Avenue represents a proactive opportunity to add to the character of Laverne's community. Too often salvaged materials are bought by private buyers and travel away from the cities where they originated via eBay. Even if salvaged materials remain in their city of origin, failure to keep records of their relocation results in their loss from collective memory. Both scenarios result in the erosion of community character and the cultural consciousness of future residents. The memory of houses demolished would be preserved by the proposed process and add to the rich character of Laverne. Furthermore, many of Laverne residents would benefit from this process. I would add that this conversation is, uh, a little confusing to me because in an earlier conversation this week with Linda Wilkinson, there was no discussion of using the Marsh House, uh, for the use of the Laverne Historical Society as a house museum. Her proposal was to move the Harsh, Marsh House and an ADU auxiliary dwelling unit, which was built sometime after the Marsh House, has no historical significance and that she would have two properties, or two houses on her property, which would be private rentals, and then the ADU, which she would rent for a nominal fee to the Historical Society. But the Marsh House would never be in use as an historical property by the Historical Society. It's important to correct the, the record on that respect. Thank you for your time and your consideration.
Thanks, Sheri. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, I have Rick Bowen on the line. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mr. Bowen.
Mr. Mayor and council, good evening. Um, I just have a couple of questions and then a couple of comments. Uh, my first question in listening here is, was the house ever on the, uh, residential market? Uh, it sounded like the, um, construction was asked by the owner, uh, to be involved, but my question is, did they ever try to sell the house? And, um, and it sounds like it happened in January. So, uh, my question on that is, does it, wouldn't the seller receive more money from a developer than trying to just resell the house as a residential product? Uh, my other comments are this. It appears that, uh, this is regarding the timeline. It appears through the paperwork that, uh, Linda Wilkinson was called by the construction company in April and they actually asked her to help move the house and there was, uh, quite a bit of back and forth discussion. But then they went silent and on, uh, July twenty-third, there was an email from matt@walburn.com, um, offering fifty thousand dollars to, uh, demolish the property. And by the way, the comment earlier by, uh, Candace Bocock said there seemed to be some, um, discrepancy there. Uh, if you read the email by Mr. Matt on the twenty-third, in summary, it says the owners are still willing to donate the fifty thousand dollars to the Historical Society. So I don't think there's any confusion there. Um, next, there was a, in that offer, again, it was fifty thousand, and two, three weeks later, on August fourteenth, there was a letter from the Historical Society saying there was no historic value. And there was another letter in, from the, uh, Historical Society, asking for part of the money. But it clearly said that the money was going directly to them to begin with. Then on September third, there was a letter from the architect asking to, um, actually expand the redevelopment area. And if you'll read that, he will say, "We should expand this. The, the city should have a bigger plan to expand the redevelopment area." And then lastly, there was the, uh, letter from Candace Bocock tonight, asking for approval in order to get a forty-five thousand dollar donation. Uh, I have to, uh, agree with Pam Berry earlier. Isn't that a bribe? If you, if you vote this way, I'll give you money? If you if you vote this way, I'll give you money? I think anybody that votes for this really does put their reputation at hand. And by the way, lastly, first of all, they offered $50,000, now it's $45,000. What happened to the other $5,000? Those are my questions and comments and I'll appreciate hearing the answers. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen.
Mr. Mayor, I have Kathy Lee on the line.
Good evening Kathy.
Hello, Mayor and City Council. I pretty much, I'm reiterating what the other callers have said now that I've listened to them. My main question is, from what I've read, is that this offer from Linda Wilkinson had come up almost a year ago. So I'm wondering why, why are we just now hearing that, the commotion of what to do with this house when there was a solution back then that was dropped or reneged on or I don't know what. I don't know if the city just told her she couldn't do it or I don't know how that ended. But I think that anything built in 1912 has to have some sort of historical value. It may not be a certain architectural or whatever, but I just don't see how, if all of the citizens are saying we want to keep that, I just don't understand why, why it would even be in question. I hope that, I guess my suggestion would be and my request would be to not vote on it tonight. I understand that the older woman wants to have a solution to her issues, but this is the first that we've all heard of this and so we really just need to have time to discuss it with the council and I think if we have a solution with Linda Wilkinson, there's it's a win-win for the city. I don't understand why we would turn that down. As far as, you know, Linda's offer, she was going to actually let them open a museum if they wanted to, so she's not asking for anything back. She's offering to the city to keep something in our city that that belongs here, it 1912. So anyway, it's just actually reiterating and asking why we did not follow through on that, that deal with her a year ago. Thank you so much.
Thank you Kathy.
Mr. Mayor, it sounds like we have one more. One, one second, please.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I believe I have Lily Brenard on the line.
Good evening Lily.
Yeah, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Lily Brenard. I live in, okay, I live in 24657 Street, okay. So Honorable Mayor, City Council, and the PTA manager. After I got a notice from my Y Avenue neighbor a few days ago, I found out 2109 Y Avenue was the old house located at the beginning of the Old Town. So every time I want to go by Y Avenue back to my house, after the news, I would see the beautiful, I live in, okay, I think, so Honorable Mayor, City Council. Okay, sorry, sorry, it stopped there, sorry, okay, I begin, sorry for this talk. I see the beautiful house, this old lady, Marsh House, at the beginning of the, for me, the name card reminds me it's home now. I feel so sorry, she passed away last year and she's, if she's still alive, she will be very sad that this house she lived in for a lifetime is very possible to be demolished. All the neighbors I know were so shocked to hear that. This old house is very valuable for our town. I mean, historical is not only because it was a well-maintained house built in 1912. Also, it carries so many people's memories. The western who grow up and play on the square street, right next to the house belonged to a kind neighbor named Marsh House. It's the value of the Old Town Laverne also named as a lottery. And I also read the quote from Linda Lotter and Wilkinson. I couldn't agree more. Any other better solution than this? She is so dedicated to our society. She's even going to pay from her own pocket and then donate, one dollar and then donate, okay, it to Laverne Historical Society. I 100% support her lottery, her estate, their plan. Please read her plan below and don't make the wrong decision in a hurry. So like the western who grow up in Laverne, you will have something precious left in the modern world. So yeah, thank you so much for listening. So just please get at least like a 90 days to let more residents know, we just noted. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you Lily.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, that concludes what we've received so far.
Shall we wait a minute to see if you have anything else or that's all the people that called in? I mean, that emailed in?
Yeah, that concludes everybody that emailed before the meeting started and even a couple that emailed during the meeting.
Okay, we will close the public portion and move back to council. There were a couple of questions that were raised, Mr. Waik, can you have your hand up? There was about three items that were raised. If you could maybe enlighten council on that regarding the widening of White and then the realtor, non-realtor situation? If you could.
I'm happy to, I'm happy to answer that and there's actually a couple of other things I'd like to quickly comment on.
Mr. Waik, if you can, wait one second. Candace, did you, did you have something you wanted to say first Candace? I'm sorry.
I just wanted to address the confusion with the, with the money.
Please, thank you.
What happened was, there was, the applicant had misspoke. He said $50,000 and the money's coming from the seller. So, so the seller, Stefan, had originally said $45,000 in an email and Matt, for some reason, had just said 50 and we all went with it. We all just went with $50,000 from there, 50,000, we all said 50, Bob said 50, I said 50, everyone went $50,000 from there. We all said 50, so then the Historical Society said 50 and then Paul Stefan caught it a little bit further down the road and said, "I just wanted to correct everyone. It is not 50, it is 45,000, so please correct it." And then it got corrected and that was where that confusion was. So that was it, end of story.
Thank you.
Matt can take care of the rest of that.
Yeah, thank you Candace.
So I first want, I first want to thank Sherri Best for her presentation and I really appreciate that. And you know, the, the biggest point that we have to look at here is that legally, there's no historic constitution to this home. There isn't any. The fact that citizens may want it to stay and the year that a home was built, that doesn't justify reasons that a home cannot be demolished. And I appreciated everybody's comments tonight, particularly the first caller, because she basically was talking about the moldings, the bi-panel doors, the hardware, the built-ins. All of that is what Sherri Best wants to take out of the home and use in other homes in Laverne. So, I mean, that point was really well taken. As far as Ms. Berry's comment and Mr. Malone's comments, the whole reason this, this contribution came about was because the owner and the seller of the property has been trying to cooperate to get this house relocated from day one. And what they offered was, and again, 45,000, 50,000, it was my mistake with the number, they were offering a contribution to go toward the cost to relocate this home on either a city property or an alternative property. The property that was brought up to us by Ms. Wilkinson was not this property that's right down the street. It was a property that was a much farther distance away, that it wasn't practical to relocate this house. And in fact, the property that's right down the street, I don't even feel from a zoning perspective, it's practical that it can be relocated here. But all that being said, we agree with everybody on the call. If the house can be preserved, we're fine with that. There's absolutely no basis in not allowing and approving the ability to demolish this house and we will agree to a 90-day period, Ms. Wilkinson only asked for 45, we'll agree to a 90-day period for which she can figure out a way, at her cost, to relocate the house to a place that she wants it. We're fine with that. We don't have a problem with that, but we have to have a vote, the owner of the property is entitled to a vote, but we're not in disagreement with anybody that called, that if they can find a way, and it was stated very clearly, at no cost to the city or no cost to the owner, that they could relocate this house. So if they're comfortable and confident they can do that, we will afford them the time to do that. We'll agree to that as a condition to your approval of the demo tonight, that they have not 45 but 90 days. So I think that's a win-win for everybody. There's no reason to postpone it. If we're going to give them twice the time, we're not going to demolish the house before the end of the first quarter next year. They have plenty of time. So we'll give them the 90 days and we feel that's, that's very fair on our part. So thank you.
Could you comment on the, Mr. Moran, can you comment on the widening of White Avenue, please?
I can. So the writing, the widening of White is a condition that Public Works discussed with us, that there's going to be a dedication that we're going to have to provide along White Avenue. But that's at the discretion of the City of Laverne Public Works Department. That has nothing to do with us. We certainly don't like giving dedications up. We lose land when we do that, but that's, that's the Public Works decision on that. And as far as the property being marketed, I never saw it being marketed. It was brought to us off-market by Jim Ran, a WF Construction, so.
And as far as that dedication, I don't believe, and Candace, you can correct me if I'm wrong, it's not for a widening of White Avenue as much as to make room to accommodate the maneuver and the turn with that property. Is that correct?
Just for like a D L lane.
Yes.
Right. Yeah, I, I think, I think what Catherine Butler is, who is maybe what we were talking about with the gold line and the White Avenue widening and this is not that at all.
So it's basically a turnout lane to get into the complex once, once this does go to fruition. So it's a cut-in lane, basically, to cut in on that. Okay. Okay. And as to your knowledge, Mr. Moran and Ted and Mr. Waik, and that was never on the market, it was a developer and a, and an owner meeting up and looking at this as a, as a deal, is that correct?
Yeah, so I'll take the lead on that. We were contacted by the seller to see if we'd be interested in the purchase of the property, which also includes the property to the west. It's not just the house, there's property behind it also that's owned by the same owner. So, and all, what I wanted to make clear here was that I reached, I reached out to Mrs. Wilkinson in an email, asking exactly what she's wanting right now, would she be to place, potentially place the prop, the house on her property, knowing that, that her house that's existing on that property wasn't going to be moved either, and I thought that might be a nice little thing. It was denied and she actually wanted to move it up to a residence up on, if I remember correctly, up on Old Ranch Road. I believe that she did research on that and we did research and that's where the $200,000 number came in. I think between that, the White property and Old Ranch Road, there was like 12 or 13 overhead Edison lines that were going to have, so neighborhoods would lose power and we'd have to bring an I O patrol to stop traffic. We had to drop the roof so we would make it underneath some of these lines. We had to cut the house in half because the street's only 30 feet in some places and the house is 60. It just became unfeasible. We were, we were, we were working with her to make this happen. This is really the last, first I've heard of her wanting it back in her property. On first, and I don't know if the zoning, that would be a Candace thing, I don't know. That was a conversation her and I had, we actually met a person at the property, it was positive and just, you know, I mean, it just didn't work out. So that's the first I've heard back. So that would be a city question, but I, I'm going to say with Matt, I think we've, we think we've come with this great prop plan that says, hey, you know, we'll give him 90 days to find where it can go and, and I think mine would even probably say we'd give him another 30 days after that. I mean, we're not trying to force this to happen, but we just, we feel like we've exhausted, we've done a lot to try to find a place for that home and we think that the salvage potentially is a win for anybody that wants any of these, you know, architectural features that really, when people describe the historic of the house, that's what's, that's what's historic. It's the knobs, it's the built-ins, it's the wood, it's the flooring, which all can be salvaged and someone would love to have it. So I think that, and the widening of the street, that's, that's, I think I'm big with Matt. On a construction basis, that's all about what Public Works aims, you know, we have to do, so.
Okay, good question. Thank you very much, appreciate it. Any other comments from, I think we'll move to council now. Councilmember Lau, would you like to start?
Sure. I think, you know, to allow a resolution for the, you know, seller of the property, I think, you know, she did make an impassioned plea and I think anyone who is in the process of trying to sell their home, you know, I think she's trying to do everything that she can. I think all the parties here have been working pretty diligently towards an amicable resolution amongst everyone. And I do think that the proposal that has been put forth does give more than what was requested previously. So you know, the vote today that allows for demolition of the house doesn't mean the house gets demolished tomorrow. If there is a way to salvage it, move it, do whatever, you know, that we've got 90 days for whoever wants to, to try to figure that out. And so, you know, again, that's, I think that's a good point that was raised, that that's double the requested time and plenty of time for folks to, to figure that out if they really want to try to, try to move it, but don't want to hold up the vote and hold up, you know, this woman's life by not putting the vote forward. So, you know, I, I think that helps to clarify a lot of things for me because there was a lot of information that did come through. So I, I appreciate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Lau. Councilmember Crosby.
Thank you, Mayor Hepburn. First of all, I appreciate all the emails today and a lot of the people appreciate them calling in as well. There are more emails that, that were sent, so read all those emails and appreciate all the calls. I really do appreciate Ms. Best coming up and saying what, what happened at the, her visit to the house. I appreciate Mr. Moran talking about his version of what happened with that house also and Mr. Waik. And I appreciate the, the buyers, developers going and even saying they'll take even a longer, longer time. But after the house is deemed not historical, and that is a special classification, it's not just the age of the house, it, it has many different factors for it to be that way. I know though, if I wanted to sell my house in, in Laverne, that I wouldn't want the city to come in and say who I had to sell my house to or do things to as well. And I believe that's the case here because my home is not historical either and I would not want the city to come in and, and deem that. So I really do appreciate everybody's voice today and what they plan to do if this goes through with the pieces of the house that made it historical, what made it historical of it, but that is still not deemed a historical house. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Crosby. Councilmember Carter?
Yes. What's before us tonight for the council is to decide if we approve the demolition and salvage of the inside materials for the Historical Society. And with that, I just, it hit me, Mrs. Johnson's plea to please move this along so that she could get her finances in order and she wants to retire. She's been doing this for 10 months now and And knowing that it's not a historical landmark there, that I think it's right, that's a possibility for us to really feel comfortable with looking at moving forward. But there is one area that does disturb me. I am not happy either with the $45,000 coming through the city. I would rather see where we move forward with this, but the $45,000, Ms. Johnson said she was going to donate that, that she donated directly to the Historical Society, not having it come through the city. I don't feel we need to be the channel for that. If I'm wrong, Candace or Bob, you let me know, but I'm just not comfortable with that money coming through the city. And that could be a donation for her specifically to Historical Society. But I would like to see that she gets what she deserves. She's trying to sell her property, her home, and get her finances. And I want her to retire. I want her to enjoy the years ahead of her. Matt, I want to thank you for your offer. I think beyond tonight, what was in front of us on the agenda, your offer to extend it 90 days after this is approved or rather, you know, will bring it to us for approval, that I think it's very fair to say 90 days. You're doubling the time requested and that gives someone a chance to see what is the opportunity for them to move it. So thank you for that. And James, thank you for being a part of this tonight, explaining, you answered a lot of questions. So, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Carter. I want to thank first the residents for their input tonight. That's very valuable to myself and council and the city. Excuse me here. That's water, people know. I want to thank especially Ms. Johnson, I understand her situation, and Mr. Moran and Mr. Waken. But I also want to thank Ms. Bocock for, it's a lot of work. This has been going on for eight months and I know it's back and forth. This took some time because this came to us last Tuesday. And then previous to that, Linda Wilkinson had sent some information, what transpired and how the workings were as far as the relocation. Being the fact that I was one of the big proponents for the non-widening of White Avenue for the gold line because of the historical aspect of that and losing properties and losing some of the historical value of our, our little neighborhood of Laverne, I'm perplexed by this for the fact that I didn't appreciate, as Councilmember Carter had said regarding the $45,000, it didn't sit well with me on that either as far as, it's a great, it's a, it's a great idea and it's, but the way it was presented, I didn't care for that. And although it's generous and I do appreciate that. And I do appreciate the 90 days. But being that said, and I understand the urgency of this, this is a historical piece of property that it's not deemed historical and we want to piece it apart. But I personally would like to make a motion to withhold the decision tonight, wait the 90 days. At the 90 days, we make the motion to follow through. That gives people a chance to find out if it's even viable further a little more because this was kind of thrown on us, although the city had it for a while. But I, I just feel that we need to vet this out a little more with our community and let Linda Wilkinson or somebody else in the 90 days, without pressure, you know, knowing that it's going to be demolished and run the clock. So my motion would be to wait the decision for 90 days. At that 90 days, we would bring it back to council and then we would make our decision and move forward with that. And I would like a second on that.
But then the seller can't sell the property.
In essence, that's correct.
Can I, can I ask a question of Mr. Waken then? Just because I'd like some clarification. You know, I understand that he proposed the 90 days, which I think was, you know, a good compromise or a good concession to allow for either Mrs. Wilkinson or anyone else to see what they can do with that particular piece of property in terms of salvage or relocation. Would it be agreeable, because I, I think it was Mr. Moran that then said they'd be willing to perhaps give another 30 days on top of that, making it 120 days. Would it be amenable to document in writing that we would do the 90 days subject to any, you know, if you're in the midst of discussions or if you're in the midst of, you know, whatnot, that there'd be, I don't know, an additional, you know, that 30 days for that grace period? I just don't necessarily want to hold up a vote on something that precludes someone from being able to sell their home. Because I do think about the fact that, you know, if any one of us as homeowners were unable to sell our property because someone else is interfering in our, in our business, right? Without just cause, you know, I think it would be different if the historical professionals and experts and the Historical Society had found a different outcome in terms of this piece of property actually having historical significance, aside from just being, I don't want to say just, but aside from its age, then that would be a wholly different story. But you've got a number of entities that have said that this does not qualify as a historically significant property. So I guess I would ask, you know, us to consider, if we were in the shoes of Mrs. Johnson, would we want the government coming in and saying, you can't sell something you own? And we don't have a reason for that other than we don't want you to sell it yet.
Go ahead, Mr. Waken.
Yeah, I will, I'll comment and I appreciate, Mayor Hepburn, I appreciate your comments on the situation. From, from our perspective, I, I don't see what would be accomplished. If we, if the votes postponed for 90 days, first of all, Mrs. Wilkinson only asked for 45. So now we're being penalized for double the time because we were trying to be gracious and offer additional time. She only asked for 45 and now we're going to be at 90. If, if, if we have to wait 90 days for an answer on the demolition, everything stops. And that is really, that's not fair to the property seller at all. And I don't see what's going to be accomplished. If we're going to agree as a condition not to demolish the house for well in excess of 90 days and to give Ms. Wilkinson 90 days to find a place to relocate the house, what's, what is the reason of, if we're giving you that time, what's the reason of postponing the vote on the validity of the, of the historical nature of the house? That's what I don't understand. I mean, the house has no historical nature to be saved and we're offering compromises in every way, salvage and relocation with timing. There's no reason that we can't vote tonight and give Ms. Wilkinson the time together. There's no reason to postpone the vote for 90 days. Nothing would occur in the 90 days that would occur if we had the vote tonight. I don't understand that.
And, and I would...
Sorry, Ms. Councilmember Lau. Also, Mr. Moran, you said it earlier and I believe it to be the case, the, the house is larger than the, the White House is larger than the one on Ms. Wilkinson's property. And Ms. Wilkinson wants the, the property on the White House to be the A U D on the other first street, which is, A U Ds are, have a limit and code. So even that house on the White Street could not be moved under the current codes for Ms. Wilkinson. Is that correct?
Yeah, that'd be a fulfilling question.
It'd be more of a city question than a question for them and I'm going to, to Candace. But that is correct. There is not at this point a path for that to occur.
And that really, really it's more the fact of giving them more time. It's not so much of where it's going to go. Giving it a time without the pressure of having us make a vote to say, you have 90 days and that's it. Now, I want to step back one step here. I appreciate the comments by Councilmember Lau. But as being on the San Gabriel Valley Council of Governments and finding that the state continually chips away at our communities with our rights as far as what we can and cannot build on our properties and what with ADUs and multiple housing units coming down the pike here very shortly, I think that the, the historic value of our community must be kept intact to as much length as we possibly can. And I feel that when we give away these little things, whether it seems that it's not historic or not, if someone's willing to do that on their dime, I think we should give them the time. I just don't want to put the pressure on them. We must remember, our little town has a tremendous amount of historic value and we need to keep that as much as we can.
And I agree with you. The charm of this is, is what drew a lot of us here, right? But I guess I'm, I'm going to go back to Mr. Waken's point and to the documentation that this council has received from Mrs. Wilkinson. She asked for 45 days. She gets 90 plus some because they're willing to work with her. And I think that makes no sense to me why we would not vote on it and allow it to go forward. If, you know, Mr. Waken came back and said, no, we're not willing to work with you at all. And, you know, once you vote demolish, we're, we're getting the wrecking ball out tomorrow and it's done. That, I, I would not be in favor of that. But I think this allows a compromise for everybody. This allows Mrs. Johnson to move on with her life. This allows Mrs. Wilkinson or whoever else is interested in the property to be able to come up with some creative way to work with whoever they need to work with to relocate or salvage it. And it allows us to hopefully keep, you know, parts of that home if at all possible. So I, I don't, you know, I don't want to extend it out any further than it has to. I think the 90 days is appropriate. And, and again, with the leeway that they've indicated that if there's a discussion being had, that they're going to be flexible. I, I think that's ideal, so.
Jim?
Yes, Rowan?
On that, I think the win-win here is if we adopt what, approve tonight, what our agenda was brought forward to us as is a win-win because Mrs. Johnson will get her money, but the 90 days still exist. Rather she feel, there's no pressure there if we were to postpone, that's still 90 days. Or if we do it and give Mrs. Johnson her money now that she needs. And then whomever is interested in moving it has the 90 days. That's what Mr. Waken has offered to us. So I think it's the same thing, it's just that we can make Ms. Johnson, who she has waited 10 months to get her money and we would like to, you know, help her out too.
Which is the resident that owns the property?
Yes.
Do you have a clarifying if I may, because there's a hanging issue out there that I'll ask Bob. If we were to, if the council were to take an action to make the contribution to the Historical Society, is that a problem that you see, they were to give that direction? Okay. So that is something that I know to have expressed a concern about.
Okay, so you're saying that the money, the $45,000, it comes through the city but goes directly, directly to the Historical Society or what do you say?
What I'm saying is if council wanted to make, amend the recommendation, because yes, it was coming to the city for the purposes of historical preservation, which a majority of those efforts are done through the Historical Society. But based on your question, Councilmember Carter, could it go directly to the Historical Society? And it sounds like yes, that could be the modification if you choose to make it. Second thing is, and I don't mean, Matt, to put you on the spot a little bit here, but does a postponement put this transaction in jeopardy?
Yes, it does. From a timing perspective, it absolutely does. We've run against it with the seller as far as what she's willing to do in, as far as her patience is concerned. This is, we thought we'd get through this in 60, maybe 90 days and we're on actually eight months. I mean, it's, it's, it's really been exhausting for her and she's running out of patience. And I haven't been able to submit any project-specific information because I've been waiting to try to find out what's going to happen with the house. And so we've gone through all these different iterations. And I just don't understand, if they have 90 days, if we're saying we don't want to put pressure on them, meaning Ms. Wilkinson, to find a relocation spot for the home, what that means to me is that if in 90 days she doesn't have a spot for the home, we're going to be talking about giving her more time. Because if we're only going to give her 90 days, then what I'm offering her right now is the 90 days. If we don't want to put pressure on her, there is pressure to find a place for this home in 90 days. She asked for 45, we gave her 90. She should have pressure. They should have pressure to find a place to relocate this home. And, and I think the 90 days is twice as long as they asked for. But I don't understand how, if we don't want to put pressure on them, then what's going to be different in 90 days for, for the owner of this property, Ms. Johnson? I mean, that's what's really not fair. I mean, that's why we're offering the time. And as far as the extra 30-day period on top of the 90, yes, we cooperate with that too. Because from my end, I have that time to give. So if there was, as, as Councilmember Lau said, if, if we wanted to say 90 days plus one option to extend for another 30 to the group trying to relocate the house, we would agree to that too. Just again, to show our good faith toward trying to find a solution tonight.
Thank you all. I still have a motion. Do I have a second on my motion? No second, then we move. Pardon? Okay, no second on the motion. We move back to the main motion. Are we all done with this discussion?
We are. I'll make the motion then. I'd like to make a motion to approve the home at 2109 White Avenue to be salvaged and then demolished in conjunction with a future development proposal.
Not earlier than 90 days from now.
Yes, add that to it.
With an option to extend for an additional 30. I'll second that.
All those, all those in favor? Raise your hand. An aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? No? Motion carries three to one. Thank you, everybody, for your time and effort. Really appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Matt. Thank you, Jen.
We'll move back. Now we go to, Mr. Peasy? Is he going to do the report or are you Bob?
I think she's going to do that and I think she may be in Dan's office, if I remember correctly. So let's wait a moment.
We move to item seven. Repeal or replace chapter 13.2 and refuse collection of the Laverne Municipal Code since the last update in 1996 of chapter 13.28.
Are you there, Tracy?
Yes, I am. Thanks, Bob. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council.
Can we turn on your video, please?
Excuse me?
Can we turn on your video?
We want to see you.
Oh goodness. There we go.
There you go.
My apologies. Okay, thank you for the opportunity to present a summary of ordinance number 1096, seeking City Council approval to repeal and replace chapter 13.28 refuse collection of the Laverne Municipal Code. Before discussing the proposed changes, I'd like to clarify a few questions you and/or our residents may have. The first of which, approval of ordinance 1096 would not affect current refuse rates. Second, waste management would not receive any additional revenue. So with that said and out of the way, I'd like to start by providing a background on why the proposed ordinance changes have been made. Excuse me. Since the last update of chapter 13.28, there have been significant changes in state law. AB 939 required all California cities to divert 50% of solid waste generated by the year 2020. AB 341, adopted in 2011, addressed mandatory commercial recycling. AB 1826, which began in 2016, imposed organic waste recycling. The law phased in mandatory recycling of commercial organics over time. And SB 1383, which was adopted in 2016, established targets to achieve 50% reduction in the level of statewide disposal of organic waste from the 2014 levels by 2020 and 75% by 2025. SB 1383 is by far the most challenging compliance the city has faced and requires just some of the following. Just to give you an idea, the first draft of this legislation was 165 pages. So that said, 20% of all disposed edible food must be recovered for human consumption. Procurement of recovered organic waste products. Cities must adopt an enforceable ordinance with penalties ranging from $50 to $500 per day for the first through third violations. SB 1383 also grants CalRecycle the regulatory authority required to achieve the organic waste disposal reduction targets. Per this law, CalRecycle may impose penalties on jurisdictions up to $10,000 per day for non-compliance. Each year, the city is required to demonstrate compliance with the above-mentioned legislation in the year or electronic annual report submitted to CalRecycle. And we must also participate in a three-hour compliance call and a half-day site visit, proving our compliance measures. I'm now going to discuss a few of the updates to the ordinance. We added new or modified definitions to clarify and regulate the collection, removal and disposal of all refuse. We added requirements to include service subscription and minimum number of solid waste containers required to accommodate the waste generated during a one week period. We added specific exclusions to employ the collector authorized by the city. And examples of that would be like your corporate programs, your your document destruction service, your your. Construction and demolition waste. Those are. Their exclusions and that fits with our waste management contact contract, excuse me. A section was added to establish service frequency requirements and mandatory adjustment of service level guidelines. This again aligns with the waste management contract. We added a section to address the issue of illegal containers and it stipulates that only the authorized collector. May place containers within the city of Laverne. We added verbiage to address requirements for special events to ensure source separation of solid waste compostable materials and recyclable materials. A timeline of the repeal and replace of ordinance 1096. If approved by City Council tonight, ordinance 1096 will be scheduled for a second reading. And final adoption at the October 19th City Council meeting and will become effective 30 days after final adoption and go into effect on November 18th of 2020. Staff recommends that City Council waive the full reading and introduce as read by title only. Ordinance number 1096 to repeal and replace chapter 13.28 refuse collection of the Laverne Municipal Code. This concludes my presentation and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Tracy. That's a lot of talk about waste, isn't it?
It is.
Best talk.
Well, all seriousness aside, it's changing drastically as we we move forward, especially with solid waste. So it's a very serious thing that we have to deal with and I know you guys deal with it. Coming down the pipe very fast. So do we have any, do we have anybody that wants to talk about this, JR? Is there anybody from the public?
Mr. Mayor, nobody's asked to comment on this and I have, I just checked and refreshed the folder and nothing's come through.
That is such a waste. Oh, sorry. I had to say that.
Residents have no time to waste.
They have no time to waste. Do we have any question? Tracy, thank you so much and Anthony, thank you very much for for presenting that. Do we have any questions from council to staff on this item? Or any comments from council? I guess I should have closed the public portion. Now we'll go back to the council portion. We have no comments for staff? On that, I guess we need to make a motion on this, Bob, to pass it as a second reading. Is that correct? Mr. Cress.
You need to introduce and waive reading in full.
Introduce and waive reading in full?
Right, staff recommendation, yes.
I'll make the motion to introduce and waive reenfull. The appeal and replace chapter 13.28 of the refuse collection of the Laverne Municipal Code.
Have a second?
I'll happily second and be happy that we update our municipal code.
All those in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? None opposed, motion carries.
Order 1096 and ordinance of the City Council of the City of Laverne to repeal and replace chapter 13.28 refuse collection of title 13 of the Laverne Municipal Code.
We're done with that?
Or that?
We go to, let's see, the COVID-19 financial update. Is that correct, Mr. Russi?
Yes, that's correct. And it says Christie Lopez, but you actually have Mark Alvarado that will be signing on, at least I believe we will. Mark, is that you?
That's me.
Okay. Turn on your camera for us?
He's a magician.
First things first.
Turned out for Christie turned into Mark. That's amazing.
We good?
We're all good.
Hey, that was a nice costume, but he changed his name first, so he's a magician.
Good evening, Mr. Al.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council. Before you, this evening is an update. If you recall during the budget process. Staff talked about coming back to the City Council on a regular basis because of the effects of. COVID-19 and all of the uncertainties that we would have with revenue projections. Expenditure projections as we closed the 1920 fiscal year. So as we're three months into the new year, we've got better information. On the end of 1920 and we wanted to share that information. And then show you how that kind of sets up as it's going to affect the the budget. The potential budget adjustments for 2021. I'll talk a little bit about the sales tax because that was the biggest issue that we were concerned about when when COVID changed everything in. The our economy and obviously. All over the country. For the third quarter of 1920, which was our January to March time period. That's when we started to first see the effects of the economy shutting down. Our sales tax was a little bit less than $950,000. That was about $200,000 less than the same period last year, about an 18% drop. For the fourth quarter of 1920, which was our April through June time period. We were about $300,000 down compared to the prior year. That's about a 25% drop. So that's the bad news. The good news is the the first two quarters of of 1920. Our sales tax numbers were up. So as we closed out 1920, we were down about $200,000 compared to the to the prior year, about a 5% drop. That actually was better than what we had anticipated. If you recall, when we were going through the budget process, we were anticipating, I think everyone was was anticipating a little bit more of a of a hit to the. Economy. We wound up collecting about 4.3 million in sales tax. We had budgeted a little bit. Our revised budget for the year was a little bit more than 4.1 million. So we we came in better than what our conservative estimates were. As that now affects our budget for 2021. We were definitely conservative going into the the budget process of what our expectations were for the current fiscal year. We had budgeted approximately 3.9 million. And now we are looking at a revised forecast of about 4.2 million for this current fiscal year. So that's going to be about a $350,000 increase over our original. Projections. And if you remember, the city manager, Russi, kept focusing on on how we were going to be conservative going into the budget process. And. Putting us in a better position to be conservative at the beginning and have better. Numbers going going into the year than the opposite. And that's 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 true. It's what we're seeing. We're definitely seeing that across the state. Other cities that I have talked to have all said that their ending numbers for 1920 were better than what they had anticipated. Two of the areas that that really helped everyone was the business and construction. At first, everyone thought a lot of construction projects would stop, but that was not the case. And then as everyone who and as everyone can probably attest to and has probably helped out, the the online sales have just boomed as everyone has stayed home and. Continue to shop and so that has really helped with the the county pools pool monies that that come into our city and and other surrounding cities. So that's the good news on our our sales tax. As that relates to the measure LV, as you remember, that's the new sales tax. The additional three quarter percent sales tax that went into effect July 1st. That is also driven by our sales tax receipt. So as our projection is going to increase for our regular sales tax. We are now looking at and being in a position where we can. Come back to the City Council with revised estimates upward of of our measure LV. We originally had a projection of about 2.7 million. A little bit over 2.7 million. We're going to come back and revise that to. A little bit less than 3 million because of the adjustment. So that's about a $270,000 or 9% increase that we will be coming back to the council with the with a recommendation to be. Increasing that. And as you recall, that that revenue will will be factored into our. Long term projection as we were looking at the sales tax to. To meet our our cost of our ongoing personnel cost increases. So that's definitely a positive going forward. Real quickly, I just going to mention two other revenues that we were concerned about during. The economic slowdown of the end of the last fiscal year, business license tax, we and and our recreation programs. This license tax only decreased about $25,000 or about 5% of what our budget was for for last year. As businesses shut down, we weren't sure what was going to be happening with with the with the business license payments. But we are going to be budgeting about. Revise our budget to about $380,000. So hopefully for 2021, we can possibly see an additional 20,000. In revenue over what we currently have in the in the budget. So again, we will be bringing that back to the City Council with. With a formalized list of budget adjustments for the current year. Recreation programs, that was the one area that we were concerned about and we still have concerns is obviously everything everything completely shut down. Once the, once everything, once we were not allowed to to do a lot of the the programs and classes. Our our program fees dropped about $400,000 or a little bit over 50%. Last year and if you remember, a lot of the programs start to gear up in the spring and and the and the summer months. So. That March through June is a very, very. Big piece of of the revenue. So we weren't surprised about that. We had anticipated about a $360,000 drop for the end of the end of the last fiscal year. So the 400,000 a little bit more than what we expected, but not too far off. This year, our projection is going to be back up over $600,000. We we came in last year at about 360. We're going to project about 616 this year. Now that sounds like a big jump, but we're anticipating hopefully getting programs back back. Back in back in session, back on the calendar and hopefully we can we can make up some some lost time during this this current fiscal year. We will definitely monitor these programs as we as we continue to go into the fiscal year. And have to come back to the City Council with. Adjustments, maybe even lowering our our projections if we have to continue to go longer with minimal classes or not any classes allowed at this time. So where does that put us in our in our in our timeline right now? We are working on finishing, closing the books for for 1920. So we're we're still making sure we we've. Booked all of our expenses and and accounted for all of our revenues. We will come back to the City Council probably in around three months, probably right after the beginning of the new calendar year. With more detailed information of exactly where we closed out 1920. But just as important, we will be looking at more data for our sales tax and other key revenues for the current fiscal year. And definitely be making budget recommendations at that at that point. We will also at that point have sales tax data for the first three months of this fiscal year. And that will definitely. Give us key indications of the economy continuing to be a little bit better than we thought, maybe even. More robust than we're thinking right now, or if there is a. Kind of second wave of of people slowing down, then then we will, we will definitely see that and be able to come back. With recommenda recommendations to the City Council. And finally. You may recall during the the budget adoption process to close the the 1920 fiscal year, we had anticipated. Using about $500,000 of general fund reserves to to balance the 1920 fiscal year. At this time, with the information that we, more specific information that we have. We are anticipating that we can, we can close a year probably using not not more than $400,000. So that's a little bit more good, good news that we don't think we'll we'll need anymore and we can. We can definitely think that we'll be using less than what we had anticipated using out of general fund reserves to close out 1920. So we just wanted to come back to council with a with a status update of of where we're at as we're as we're closing 1920. This is a receive and file. Staff report. There is no recommended action for the for the City Council at this time. But at this time, I will be happy to answer and any any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Al. I I wanted to make sure that you look really good for closing the books for 1920. I must say. You look excellent. 2020, buddy, 2020. You look great. Anyway, thank you very much, Mr. Russi.
Yeah, just a couple of things I'd like to add to that. Thanks, Mark. Good report. I just want to point out at this point. You know, we talked about looking at expenditure changes or some of the things that we had put on hold. We are not asking for any anything relative to that now. We want to wait and really see over the next three month period, what, if anything, we is going to hold in this regard. So not asking for any change. Point out that we are still programming a million dollars from reserves in this current year as a result of that, but. All this is good news that could help to adjust some of those other things and measure LV. While it's up, it is still down from what our initial projection was by about $300,000, give or take. So. Just a couple of of other things to put in context. Good news, but not certainly where we would normally be outside of the pandemic. So with that. Questions?
Also, any questions for staff? Councilmember Laus?
Sorry, that was a scrap. I was just going to say thank you to the staff and I was, I saw Mayor and Robin go up first, but I'll just really quickly, thank you for coming back to us. You know, we did provide the directive that we did want an update and, you know, I'm glad to hear that the news is better than. What we thought it would be and I do appreciate us continuing to be conservative because we don't know what this. You know, what this winter season will bring us. So thank you for all your work.
You're welcome.
And Mayor, I was just going to say there is somebody that wants to speak on this item, just so you know.
Oh, we probably should go back to that right now.
Hold on one second. I'll pull them up. Mr. Salinas, the mayor and council would like to hear from you.
Good evening. Again.
Mr. Salinas, are you there? Mr. Salinas, hello? Well, I will try to call him back. Hold on.
Just let us know. Will we can, let's go to Councilmember Carter. Some comments?
Yes, Mark, thank you for the report. On this, you know, I keep reading the report and I keep coming back to the fact that. Do you know how fortunate us as a city, our residents, our police, fire, all that we have going on in this city, we passed, you know, our tax measure? That's huge. Other cities are struggling. So even though we might be down in some areas, it's just a blessing that we passed this. And the residents have the confidence in the city and I've got to give kudos to the police department. They were out there walking the streets. You know, encouraging people to support this and I am so grateful that we have this now to fall back on also. So with that. I'm happy to see where we are, that we only have to take $400,000 out of our reserves. That's huge. When we talked back, you know, in June. How much we would need, this is such a better figure. So thank you and for all of our staff working tight. With their budgets and getting things done. So good job. And would you please thank Christie? I know how hard Christie works.
Every day, every day.
Thank you, Councilmember Carter. Mr. Davis?
I thank you, Tim. I just wanted to join Rob and thanking the entire financial department. In the rigorous work that you've done. I know that asking you to come back to us on a regular basis is is a convenience for us, but it's a it's a significant workload. For you and your team. So thank you for that. I didn't need the information to be. I didn't need the information to be better than what I'd hoped, but I'm happy that it is. So kudos to the entire community of Laverne for hanging in there together and shopping Laverne and making sure that we're generating revenue for Laverne. I Tim had brought it up in a different way, but I just wanted to make sure I was clear on it. And it might clear it up for other folks. You weren't jumping a century. You were talking about calendar year 2019, 2020, when you referenced 1920.
I've got it. I've got to remember that.
No, that's I just.
It was 100 years ago.
I just wanted to make sure that everybody was on, you know, understood that and that 2021 wasn't talking about next year. It was talking about the fiscal or the fiscal year 2020 and 2021. So 100 years from now, folks, dig up these archives and you can that because then it'll be it'll be, what is it? I don't know, 20? I I don't even know how the numbers will work then. I hadn't thought about that far, but thank you very much.
Only money, man. Only money, man. Mr. Crosby?
First of all, do we have the caller back?
Is this gonna check?
He's, I'd say go ahead.
All right, but yes, just like the rest of council members. Thank you, Mr. Alvarado and your team. And thank you for coming back to us. I know that has been a request for all of us. It's really, it's it's good news. And that we can put that money back into our reserves. I know we had over a 30% reserves prior to this this budget. And taking 500,000 out and 1 million next year would still put us at a a I think it was about 27%. Bringing that back up to that percentage back up to what we we feel really safe and confident that to keep running our city. So thank you so much and really do appreciate the the due diligence you put in the money that every cent that comes in, that we're watching every penny of it. So thank you.
Welcome.
I will basically reiterate what all everyone else has said. I do appreciate it tremendously. You run a tight ship. I look at your bills and and everything's your Ts are crossed and your Is are dotted. And we do appreciate it. I just want to make sure everybody knows though, too, that this storm is not over. And we're we're heading into some territory that we haven't seen yet. But I do appreciate how tight you guys run the ship. Mark, you and Christie and 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 all the staff do a great job. And they treat it as their own, and I appreciate that. As a business owner, I truly appreciate that. So thank you again for staff. Thank you.
We have.
Raymond JR?
Hi, Mayor.
Mr. Salinas, you're live?
Good evening, again.
Hello, again. I just have one question. Do you guys just bag all this financial stuff to go back to normal after the November 3rd election? Because there's been talks about like everything go back to normal after the election. Very much.
I'm sorry, I did not understand that, that.
I I wasn't clear on that.
He was asking if finance was considering everything going back to normal after the November 3rd election.
I don't know. I don't think so. I I don't I don't think we're gonna have a new normal until
Three to four years out, maybe.
Yeah, it's gonna it's gonna be a while. We're we're gonna we're gonna slowly get there. We're gonna slowly get there.
That would be a no. Okay, any other questions for Mr. Alvarado?
No.
Saying none. This is to file only. We are going to we are going next to, we are going to council.
Thanks, Mark. No public comment.
I'm like, I'm sorry, public comments.
Hi, Mark.
Thanks, Mark.
Thank you. Public comments.
Mr. Mayor, I have Jackson Salinas again for public comment.
Okay, thank you. Hello again.
Hello, again. I just have some questions. Is there, we're going to police department. Is there a way like have a policy where if if a member of the public asks if there's like a problem with like a police officer, if we could have that handle with the department? Because I looked on the website, there's nothing saying that they have to ask for the have to verbally give out the name and badge number when that's by member of the public. I think it would be beneficial because it can help the police officers like involved accountable for their actions. Thank you very much.
Thank you. JR?
Mayor, I have Rick Bowen for a public comment.
Good evening again, Mr. Bowen.
Mr. Bowen, go ahead. You're live.
Yes, hi. Just might want to make a quick comment. I've waited for six months to see this council support our mayor. Tonight's vote against the mayor again, I find disgraceful. At at approximately one minute and 10 or one hour and 10 minutes, the mayor made a motion. Was not acted on. He was talked over. He was he was just not addressed. He's not addressed as mayor. He's addressed as Tim. While he addresses all council people as council people by their last name. It is, you just passed a motion that did not remove the donation to the city as was discussed. So you discuss it, but then you don't make the proper motion by councilperson Carter. Therefore, I'm asking at the next meeting to have an agenda item for this city of Laverne to go to district voting. In 1965, there was a Voting Records Act, Voting Rights Act, which eliminated at-large voting. This city has continued at-large voting, and I feel that for many years it worked. It appears that it does not work anymore. California Voting Rights Act of 2001 instituted district voting. And I believe it is now time for the city of Laverne to institute this district voting versus at-large. So I'm asking all the council people for someone to put it as an agenda item for next month or the October 19th meeting for discussion and implementation. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowen. We're ready whenever you are, JR.
Mr. Mayor, I believe I have Joseph Bural.
Good evening.
You're a little quiet. If you could try to speak up a little bit louder.
Can you hear me, sir?
You are a little.
Okay. How about now?
Still very quiet.
I'll speak a little bit louder. Um, I did on a cliff Old Wheeler Road. And there's a lot of brush, dead brush, that is over my fence. And the city, the property that is over the fence on the hill is owned by a family that doesn't live in Laverne, doesn't maintain the property, doesn't even know about the property, to be honest with you. They have some issues when I moved in, sent them a letter, they never responded. And I was forced to clean the the brush myself that I could. So there's a lot of dead brush over the hill on the foot that you cannot get to. You need a professional. And also there's next to the Ha Ha House, the the property that I believe the city owns. There's a lot of brush with a lot of trash that people throw over. I'm very nervous because the fire keeps in. What is it that you guys are intending to do or want to do to clean the brush in the area?
Can I get an address
Please.
from you, sir? And we can follow up on that area tomorrow?
Absolutely. On the cross street of Mills Park, 5765, Old Wheeler Road.
Okay.
The one that is next to the the main flip. Next to the two homes.
Okay, we have your phone number and I will also follow up with you tomorrow and get some more specifics. Hard to do over through Zoom, but I will have somebody in Fire or Public Works follow up with you.
I appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you.
And then also, sir, sir?
Yes.
It's not about, this is not about brush. There are downtown Laverne, the old home, the older homes, that you say, there is a lot of dirt, there's a lot of debris, a lot of junk, that makes you think in a nice way. People's backyard, side yard, front yard. And it's, and if you drive in the alley, you'll see the couch, you'll see a mattress. It's not being picked up and it's not being supported. Not something else that we should be, you know, that we should come. I know it's not about brush, but it's a fire hazard.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rusty, you want to come on then? Comment on that?
No.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, very good. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sorry, it'll just be a second. Obviously, remind the public if anybody else wants to comment to go ahead and get us their phone number via email right now.
But you have nothing right now. Is that correct?
There's one more.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Mayor, I have Pam Berry for public comment. Go ahead, Pam.
Good evening again.
Um, okay, I was, um, my comment has to do with some of the things that are opening now, such as there's some talk about playgrounds and some things with with the modifications. So with that in mind, I would like to see some modifications or at least a plan in regard to public access for council meetings. And any updates as to potential reopening with CDC and county guidelines? Distance seating maybe, map indoors or lower capacity or outdoor seating outside the council meeting and coming into the chambers to a solo mic for comments? Anything that we can do to get back at least let's distance, let's say that. And not in the sense of the CDC distancing, but this the technology piece is not really working. It severely limits the resident engagement and participation. Until full opening is able to occur, many comments are not getting heard during the meeting due to phone calls that get missed or emails that didn't get a response. Regarding emails, they have very little impact because they're not even read at the meeting. They're just added to the minutes. I'm not even sure if the city is dispensing those or if if just if the residents send it to the council. How much time does the council have to look at those? So all resident input needs to be available and heard before vote. Not just added to the minute. And any calls, the comments are only noted in the minutes as the name of the caller, but not the comment. And we need this to be equivalent to what it was before COVID. So that the live council meeting in the minutes indicates what the comments were. So especially important during public hearing items that, you know, the minutes just say, you know, Pam Berry called, which is kind of like a note you stick on the refrigerator. So I'm just asking what we can do to kind of bring back at least some opening. And I would love to get some feedback on that or let's talk about it in the future. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Pam.
Okay, good night.
Night.
Mr. Mayor, I have no other requests for public comment at this time?
I think we can go to, we've closed the public comment side. Unless somebody does call, let's go to council comments and conference meeting reports. Who would like to start? And Councilmember Law?
Oh, I sorry, I'm Rick, hand gesture, but no, I'll I'll go. I just wanted to say first and foremost, you know, thank you to all the citizens that went to the and took the time to read the fire study, watch the presentation on from the consultants regarding fire services who took the time to email with their thoughts and ideas and comments. It is appreciated. I think if I remember correctly, we received over 120, I think, was the the count that we got. So I'm I'm glad to hear that because it is a an issue that has been of concern to a lot of people. So I'm glad people are participating. I understand that the comment period has closed on the fire study. However, there is still opportunity to engage, obviously, with the city council, with your firefighters, with staff. If you have any questions or concerns that you want to raise, I I definitely urge you to to do that. I also want to extend a huge thanks to the firefighters and the battalion chiefs who took time out of their day to not only meet with Mirror and and Rick, but also took time to schedule some time with me as well to to answer questions. And I think it's clear, at least from my conversations with them, that, you know, our shared goal for our city is for us to have safety for our residents, that our fire safety services and paramedic services are top-notch. And that we are also have are aligned in the goal to make sure that the work environment for the firefighters is appropriate. And a good place for people to be. So I think aligning those goals is has been important. And I, you know, really commend those folks for taking the time to have those discussions with us because I think that's gonna be a very positive path forward, particularly given some of the history that has happened that, you know, I think, you know, I think everyone has said it from residents to to people from everywhere that, you know, we've really got to find a path forward. So I feel very heartened by these conversations. And so I I do want to extend my heartfelt thanks to both the residents and the firefighters. Just a reminder, I know everybody knows elections are coming up, you know, in particular for the Benino Unified School District School Board. There are nine exceptional candidates vying for three positions, and I urge you to take the time to either listen to the forums coming up. I know Leah Skinner had mentioned the one the chamber is putting on. But LV3C did host the very first one last week. And so I I believe that is available for folks to view. So definitely encourage you to do so so that you get to know the candidates. And, you know, thank you for to LV3C for putting that on. I think that is a helpful way to disseminate information to the public. For this year, because it's a different year, I will say we are not having homecoming at the University of Laverne like we normally would. But it is scheduled to be game on weekend. So I share this because the university will be putting out information about events that are going to be virtual that the community can participate in, whether it's an early exercise class with Coach Durant or, you know, a financial workshop with someone else. There are opportunities so that look for that information as well if you're looking for something to do on game on weekend, which is the weekend of, I think, October 16th, 17th, 18th, if I remember correctly. And then last but not least, you know, I think Mayor Hepburn said it best that this is not over in terms of this pandemic. You know, if you haven't heard from your health professionals, they are urging folks to get your flu shots early and not wait till the last minute because, you know, you you might not end up being able to get one and you don't want to be in that sort of situation. So take care, stay in good health. And again, thank you to everybody who continues to participate and be engaged in our city. It is appreciated.
Thank you, Councilmember Law. Councilmember Carter?
Yes, first, I'd like to give a big thank you to our Chamber of Commerce, our director Leah Skinner, and all of her board of directors on Saturday. They were able, county approved, to have a community yard sale. And there were less vendors out there, but they were separated. Plenty room between them. Everybody wore a mask. And it you could see from the people that did come out that they were happy to get out and just come around. There were people coming from West Covina all over coming to our city. So hopefully, they went downtown or up in northern Laverne for lunch and had a good time. So I think that was a nice event to put on. So thank you, Chamber of Commerce. The other thing is that I want to talk about is the goal line. I know there's so many people always interested, always writing me about what's going The other thing is that I want to talk about is the goal line. I know there's so many people always interested, always writing me about what's going on. But I wanted to tell you, it is coming through Laverne. So do notice on our website, you'll see more information about it. But Wheeler Avenue and Arrow Highway, it will be closed from October 13th to January 1st. So if you are traveling down in that area, just, you'll find different detours to get around. But it's happening. You're gonna see action down there and it's above schedule. So good things are happening.
Councilmember Carter. Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess just to elaborate a little bit on what Robin just said. The official detour is Sandy Miss Canyon Road. If you're local, there are other convenient detours that you can take other than Sandy Miss Canyon Road. That seems to me like a long way to go to go run that, that little closure. It is that time every four years. The, hopefully everybody's received not only their official sample ballot, but their actual ballot in the mail. The box opened today at the library to receive your envelope as soon as you've made your decision on who you're voting for. Don't, don't put in the ballot early, but you don't need to wait until November 3rd to cast your vote. There will be some in-person places opening up on October 30th. But you don't even, you can just either fill out your mail-in and mail it or fill it out and drop it off. Either way, that way you can participate in our national and local government. Beyond that, I wish everybody is safe and, well, actually we're meeting before Halloween, so I won't, I can, I can postpone that, so never mind.
Mr. Davis. Councilmember Crosby.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis, I, I didn't catch it, but hopefully you said the, the only place to vote in Laverne is at this Episcopal Church on Wheeler. Is where our voting place is going to be. So again, it's a multi-day, day voting, so don't wait to the last second. I know in March, people waited in line all the way till 10, 11 o'clock. So vote early. I'm not gonna say vote often because that's illegal, but vote and make sure you get your vote in. Thanks. The census though also was continued to October 31st. So if you have not filled out the census, please do and get that done. Thank you for that extension for there too. I want to put a special thanks out though to Chief Paz and Laverne PD. Two weeks ago, my next door neighbor had stuff stolen out of his truck. At 4:45, the Ring videos in all my, I have eight houses on my cul-de-sac, all caught the, the, the person coming in and went straight to his truck and took out, stole out the back of his truck, some, some items. Then drove two blocks and broke into a truck there. So Laverne PD came out right away, report and they were professional all the way. So really appreciate what they did. It's a big reminder that we need to always make sure everything's locked. Because there are people out there that sometimes are not doing always the right thing. And that's why we have our protections as well. So thank you, Chief Paz and our Laverne PD. And the last thing, I think everybody said it, register to vote, vote and make sure you get out there. Thank you very much. And today was a great meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Crosby. I'm gonna reiterate basically what everybody else said. A lot of things going on, vote, census. I want to do a shout out to our Public Works, our, our police and fire, the jobs they're doing out there. And I want to especially thank the One Strike Team that's still up north. They keep rotating our firefighters and they're definitely in harm's way. And shout out to their family and please be safe out there. And we do appreciate what you do for other communities to build relationships for us. It's greatly appreciated. Thank you guys very much. Also, remember, keep putting our dollars in Laverne. I've been to multiple restaurants lately and I'll tell you what, the outside dining is amazing. The food's been great, the atmosphere, you get to see residents, at least chat. And so it's some, some sense of normalcy. So please, the marketplace, the foodie corridor, please keep your dollars in Laverne. The gas stations, convenience stores, you name it. Let's keep our dollars here. That's one of the reasons why we're not doing so bad as, as we would have anticipated. So please keep your local dollars here. And we are opening things up again now with COVID-19 with our different stages of opening. We'll be opening some other things. Just visit the Laverne City website for what's gonna be opening here soon as far as facilities or playgrounds, things like that. And also thank you to Lupe for giving us all the updates for the election. That has been just absolutely incredible for our residents because we're getting questions. But any of that information's on the Laverne website. Thank you, Mr. Rusty. We're doing a real good job. I think people are getting the information and it's, it's firsthand, it's fresh. And when changes occur, it's right there. So that really does help our residents, especially in this voting when we have a few places to go to and, you know, and it's all ballots, you know, mail-in ballots, a lot of people are not comfortable with. So. And again, thank you for staff. This has been tough on everybody. Everybody seems to be just functioning really well, even this COVID environment. But thank you to all. Appreciate it. We will, or do we have any other, and nobody else called in, JR? Nope, we're good. We will be recessing to closed session. Mr. Rusty?
Yes, I have two topics. One is conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation under Government Code, section 54956 dot 9 subsection D4, one potential case. And then the other one is Government Code section 9454957 dot 6. And the unrepresented employees, middle management and executive management. Nothing to report out of either of those.
Yes, we are not reporting out. Our next regular scheduled meeting is Monday, October 19th at 6:30 PM. We will now at 8:48 PM go to recess to closed session. Thank you all.